Is there anything else for you?
Uh huh, and no AV?
And yeah, no, no media.
Okay. Thank you. Come forward, and why don't you also, you might introduce yourselves.
Lou.
On the record, thank you very much.
I'm Jasmine Graham, and this is Jenna Amundson. We're from Sustainable Westchester and Westchester Power. So first off, I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight, and also thank you for being a part of Sustainable Westchester and Westchester Power. As you know, our mission at Westchester Power is to increase renewable energy locally, so to bring the positive environmental and human health benefits here, and also circulate our dollars locally. And to refresh your memory, Westchester Power is the nonprofit administrator of New York's first community choice aggregation, so that's a CCA. And the CCA is a bulk purchasing program for electricity in the village of Irvington. It's one of 20 municipalities in the program, and one of 14 that opted for 100 percent renewable wind energy. So that's amazing, and thank you for that. Also, being part of the CCA means that you have a fixed rate through April of next year. And if you look in the packet that we gave you, inside that folder, there's some updated numbers on our progress. We estimate that there's about 2 million tons of CO2 that have been avoided, approximately 750 million kilowatt hours served, yep, and $1.6 million saved in the aggregate.
Across the counter.
Mm-hmm. We believe right now that Irvington's savings have probably been around $65,000 in the aggregate, but we are working on bringing hyper-local data to all of the communities. So we've contracted with a data service company called Ampion, and we're just waiting for all of the towns to, you know, give access and allow us to give the data to that company so that every town and every individual can go online and see their personalized statistics in terms of CO2 avoided and dollars saved and whatnot. So we're really excited about that, and that's when we're really going to be able to start bringing you guys good numbers about this. So after a year, the big lesson learned is that the pilot worked. We're still here, and at the heart of our success is our customer service. We're located right in Mount Kisco. We have five very dedicated Westchester residents as our staff, and we're fielding calls from residents every day, whether it's, you know, how the program works, or just understanding their energy bill. You know, we can be on the phone for 10 minutes or 30 minutes, but, you know, we always do what it takes to get people's questions answered. So we do want people to know that our phone number is 914-242-4725, and, you know, board, if you ever get any questions or inquiries, please direct them our way, because we do know how to explain the program, and, you know, electricity can be pretty confusing, and especially your energy bills, so don't worry about directing people to us, we can take it from there. Also, Westchester Power is one of many really awesome Sustainable Westchester programs. Right now, the Clean Transportation Project, led by Ron Caiman, has secured up to $19,200 off the 2017 all-electric Nissan Leaf. We just want to mention that, because there's under 100 Leafs left. People have really taken advantage of this program. It's $10,000 off the base price, another $1,700 in New York State rebates, and up to $7,500 in federal tax credits, so...
I think we've already had a leaf from the program.
Yeah, yeah, and just letting everyone know, all residents, anyone who lives or works in Westchester can take advantage of that. So the big thing that we're talking about today is we're going into our renewal season, so, you know, that requires us to conduct outreach, and although our outreach efforts are always continuous, we want to ensure that we have two months of targeted outreach with your residents so that they understand the program, we can educate them, and also, you know, get feedback and respond to that feedback. In terms of outreach, that can be public hearings, you know, right here, or we can go down to the senior center of the library and hold an informational session. You know, whatever works for you, you know, we're happy to be flexible. And then aside from the outreach, we need each town to sign another memorandum of understanding, or an MOU. It'll contain new triggers. As you might remember, the triggers from the first round were a fixed rate that was lower than the previous 12-month average, since Con Ed rates are variable. And so there will be new triggers, and that's not something that we need to think about right now, but we definitely want you to keep it in the back of your mind, since we'll be going into the new bidding process in January. But right now, we're just going to be focusing on outreach, doing things like this, getting out in front of the community, and making sure that people understand the program. So if you have any questions...
One question and one request. If you could leave a couple in the back, just in case anyone in the meeting today that came maybe interested in getting some of the additional information, so, and if they don't take it, we'll put it upstairs on the table in the lobby. The other thing is, I'm a little concerned, but also interested. I think we're going to need to hear a lot more about the data security if we're starting to manage personalized data, usage information for each account. So that's going to have to be something that's presented to us, I think, for us to become comfortable about.
Yeah, definitely, I understand that.
The data is secure through Ampion. They are a utility services firm, so that's what they do, and they have cybersecurity interests and all of that kind of thing, so that's why we chose to work with them.
Right, well, I appreciate that. I don't think that's a sufficient definition, and I'm sure any MOU would have additional details attached to it.
Yeah, this would actually be prior to the MOU. This is, you know, some towns have actually, you know, given us the okay, so we are hoping that, you know, we could mock up one town's data and find, you know, on a town level, maybe not an individual level, but, you know, aggregate savings or aggregate carbon emissions avoided, you know, and then we can come to you, and you'll see what it looks like for another town. At first, we were waiting for everybody, but, you know, in terms of safety, I see why a lot of people are worried, so when we get that first town, we'll definitely bring it to you, and you'll see what it's all about.
Say your phone number again. Okay. And your welcome calls, right?
Yes, anytime, anybody, no matter how long it takes, we'll be there.
Thank you very much for the update, I appreciate it. All right, so now we're going into announcements. We have several checks over $25,000, which Brenda can tell us about. Isn't that the standard practice?
Okay, sure. Is it our purchasing policy that any checks over $25,000 is co-signed by the mayor? And that additionally, the board is notified every day of the practice, but also announced that we, and certain ones of there, are getting large checks. Those only checks are not in the routine of doing business, so it's exempt from things like paying our medical help premium, or insurance, or utility bills, which could be over $25,000. And this case, there was a check payable to Peter Landing. It was for repair of the L'Oreal Park Bridge, and it's from the Capitol budget, actually was paid for by FEMA, meaning that $25,000. We don't need that one in the paper? Um, yeah, it's on...
Yeah, it is. Okay.
It didn't, it's fine. Okay. Don't worry about it.
And then we have a couple more, all right?
Oh, next one, yes, we have another one. Another one is for $49,548. This is to Allied World Specialty Insurance. It's a progress payment for the Village Hall exterior, also funded by Capitol Projects. That's coming along quite well, too.
I'm waiting for the columns.
And the third one? Oh, okay, please, thank you, Mary Ann. Last one is for an amount of $36,833, and this is New York Guard Consulting. It's for the Route 9 car study.
Which, just to be clear, it's, Irvington is acting as the grant administrator for the six or seven villages, municipalities involved in the Route 9 study. So in that case, the money goes through, paid through Irvington to the planning consultants.
Right, and that's through a grant.
So next, we got to announce two public hearings, and I guess Mary Ann could tell us a little bit about each one. The first one is, well, they're both scheduled for September 18th at Village Hall at 7:00 PM. The first public hearing is to consider a local law amending the sign code regulations.
Yeah, I don't know, it was probably two or three years ago, the village enacted a new blue sign ordinance, and, you know, as it's been enforced, there were a couple of things that were off or unaccounted for that we're correcting with this local law. Now, there's quite a few changes, but there's eight particular, I'll tell you about, won't take long. One is sign is redefined, so that it also includes a board, or blackboard, or anything like that, of con which letters, pictures, or symbols are based. And it also says that a video or computer screen or digital display designed to use for the purpose of attracting the attention of the public to the subject matter on the street should also be considered as a sign. It defines temporary signs, because temporary signs don't require ARD approval, and it wasn't defined before. It's not defined as a sign that's placed for a limited period of time, not exceed 30 days, and there's some examples, posters relating to civic or athletic events, concert special events, or products or services offered for sale. There's a provision that signs have to be displayed either on a building or within four feet of a window, and can't project more than three inches beyond the face of the building. However, there's at least one building in town, there may be more, where there's a really big overhang, and it makes sense for them to have the sign there, but it would project more than three inches out. So there was a provision put in where the building has an eave overhang of more than one foot beside the hang of the eave. And then there's provision that not more than 30 percent of a window can be covered by signs, and it's now 30 percent of the window, or the area within four feet behind the window. People try to get around it by saying, well, sign, the window is behind the window. So if it's within four feet of the window, it's counted. There's a provision that allows signs in between the building and the street when the building's stuck there, more than 10 feet from the street. That's already in there, but there's a limit on the height of 10 feet that would be added by this law. I'm almost done. There's a prohibition in the law about flashing, moving, fluttering, changing, or intermittently illuminated signs, and this says that their prohibition does not apply to video or computer screens. And that one of the standards added to the ARD guidelines in reviewing signs is that the brilliance degree, intensity, and type of illumination for illuminated signs should be the minimum necessary for the purpose of the illumination, which is consistent with the policy.
Quarter scale?
Pardon?
Quarter scale?
Yeah, okay, I'll pick up.
No, that's, that could affect business owners' understanding.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I didn't go through, like, the very technical, but that one I will. I guess it's, the scale, right now, it was unclear what the scale was, or when you're making the application, and you put in your drawing with the scale, and the scale should be at least a quarter inch to one foot.
All right, so then there's a second public hearing we're announcing, again, September 18th at 7:00 PM Village Hall, for a local law amending, creating landscaper registration. And I have to say that the version that got posted with the agenda that's currently on the website is an old version. The new version should get posted, hopefully tomorrow, on the Village website, and Mary Ann will talk to us about this now.
It's not hugely different. It was just an earlier draft with comments on it, and they were already resolved. Essentially, what the law says is, in order to do landscaping in the village, except on your own property, you need to register with the village. And the requirements to register are to complete a form and pay a fee, it's $25 for the company, it's not a high fee. And the registration form, the landscaper has to state that they read, understand, and agree to comply with the village's leaf blower law, the leaf blower guidelines, and many other village laws and policies. And also, the landscaper has to submit proof of availability and current Westchester County home improvement license, which the county requires for landscaping. And then, when the village clerk said, "All right, you've met everything," there'd be a tag to put on, put on the truck, and it's got, or the car, whatever it is, and it's got the valid dates, and then a provision that sets the fee at $25. It's $25 for a company.
And you get as many tags as you need, one per truck for that?
The other thing to know is this, this will go in effect December 31st, 2017, so it will not be in effect for the fall season, we won't start building until, on December.
Will the leaf blower is not in effect until December?
No, 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 no. The landscaper registration law.
Do you want to wait till public comment, too?
Just fine.
Do you mind to say, keep it in?
No, I just have a question.
Oh, if you have a specific...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just baffled why we need a license for, first, I'm hearing, it doesn't, it doesn't affect me, but, I mean, one of the reasons that years ago, the county went to a county license is because the new business in Westchester was an absolute nightmare. I know this is all near Irvington, but if you do business in every municipality in Westchester, that's now 43 landscaper licenses that you have to get.
Okay, so...
I'm a licensed plumber, we went through this before, because, you know, it's $25 now, and as time goes on, this, this stuff goes up and up, and at one point, it was about, for plumbers, it was like $5,000 to have a license in Westchester County, and in each town, and that was one of the reasons they got away from that, the county took it over. Sounds like we're starting to go backwards by having municipalities have laws on top of the, licensing on top of the licensing that you already have.
There is a rationale for the licensing, but I think that your question's actually best suited for the public hearing, so that everyone, so we can have a detailed conversation, if you don't mind. But I will say that one thing was, the intention of this was already, following some other of our local village municipalities are doing the same thing, like Terry Town, and they use it as a handle to control enforcement, you know, because then you can remove the permit if someone is breaking the noise ordinance, for instance. So, okay, so let us go on to the correspondence section now, there's quite a few. I am going to try to read them without slurring, and I have to apologize ahead of time if I am actually destroying anyone's game, which I don't intend to do. And I believe these are in order, so we will start. I will summarize a few of them. We got a letter from Larry Will, who I would characterize as a lobbyist for at least one company who sells commercial leaf blowers. And what he's trying to say essentially is that the biggest issue is noise, that's the only issue, and that a lot of the other issues people come up with in terms of things like emissions, and like articulate matter for causing asthma, and stuff like that, are actually not anything that's reasonable and not characterized by science correctly. He does, rather than go into this whole thing, I will give you his website address, which he has a whole, I think it's just, leafblowernoise.com.
It's under a signature.
Is it under a signature as well? Yes, leafblowernoise.com. I have actually gone through the site and looked at it pretty much in detail, where I was trying to help develop some of the courtesy guidelines. It's interesting reading, but a lot of the details are pretty convoluted, it's probably worth reading and forming your own opinions about. Okay, so now I have a letter from Tom Thacker, and regarding proposed parking regulation changes. Dear Larry, we are writing to express our concerns with the proposed changes to village parking regulations. While we wish to express our appreciation for the work the village has carried out to find a solution to what has increasingly become an untenable situation for village residents who seek to park on the street on which they live, there are two concerns we would like to raise. The first concern relates to the proposal to change the current six-hour parking limit to two hours throughout much of the village, but to continue to permit six-hour parking on North Buckout, Bridge Street, and the section of Main Street between Astor and Buckout. We strongly oppose this carve-out for the following reasons. North Buckout and Bridge Street between North Buckout and Astor currently present undue parking problems for residents due to post office traffic, El Cerrizo customers, Matheson Park visitors, and the frequent presence of post office vehicles in parking spots. Should the village change the parking regulations to two hours on most of the other side streets in Irvington, but not these streets, the presumably unintended consequences would be to drive even more day trip traffic to this area, increasing the already difficult parking situation for residents. While we recognize that it is inconvenient, it is an inconvenience for residents who do not have a Metro North parking permit, do not feel allowed to park for six hours in this area, so they can pop into New York City, it is a far greater inconvenience for those of us who live here not to be able to park near our host houses. The second concern, which predates, predates the proposed changes and needs to be addressed immediately as well as in the future, relates to the very spotty parking enforcement. Some days cars are chalked, but many, many days they are not. The 15-minute spots in front of the post office, a smart, convenient way to provide spaces for post office customers, are rarely enforced. A number of us have called, have called the police department innumerable times about the overall absence of enforcement in our area. Often, there is response the day of the call, but then the situation reverts to the previous pattern. The lack of strict enforcement of parking regulations unless addressed will render proposed parking regulation changes completely ineffectual. We would ask that you take our concerns seriously and put them into the public record, as a number of us will be out of town or aren't available for the public hearing. Okay, so signatories include Brian Goldman, Carrie Reich, Tom Thacker, Kate Proll, Matt and Corey Crane, Jeremy and Christine Seitz, Carol Kavanaugh, Gail and Dawn Gaffney. A letter from Beth Popper. Thank you for safety improvements near the Irving High School shortcut on Riverview Road. Dear Chief Serone and Mr. Schopfer, I have attached photos of the new and helpful signage for evening standing and parking in the area near the shortcut to the IMS IHS campus on Riverview Road. I arrived home from vacation in Maine to have a helpful neighbor tell me about this helpful proactive step taken by the police department and the village administration. Thank you very much, Chief Serone and Mr. Schopfer. Then she says that she hopes the school district will, before the school starts, educate parents and students about the changes, so that they'll be aware of what can or cannot be done in that area, and the fact that they must be aware that it's a residential neighborhood and yield to pedestrians, be aware and courteous about residents' driveways, and so forth. And then she just also takes, thanks, thanks again, and she hopes to see additional improvements in the future, especially as the Route 9 project proceeds forward. Okay, so now we have one, I'm not sure who this is from, I'm going to just scan down. Arthur and Ramona Segretti. Okay. Dear Mr. Schopfer and the Board of Trustees, we are writing this letter in response to your email dated July 24th, 2017, regarding potential changes to parking regulations in the village. Before we share our concerns, we would like to thank you all for your hard work and attention to this matter. We are well aware that this can at times be a thankless task, and assure you that your attention to the various issues that face Irvington, especially parking, and your efforts to please the greater community are appreciated. That said, we have serious reservations regarding part of the plan outlined in your email. We have lived at 10 North Buckout Street for over 20 years. During that time, we have seen the parking situation on our street become an increasing hardship for us all, as well as our neighbors. In the email, you stated the lower parking district, defined as Main Street from Astor to Dutcher Street, generally has a surplus of available parking throughout the day. Also, you stated, change all Main Street side streets to two-hour parking, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except near North Buckout-Astor Streets. North Buckout, North Astor Streets remain six-hour parking, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Close quote. Living on this street for so many years, we are confused as to how these conclusions were reached by your board. We are not aware of any survey conducted that would have yielded that result. We can assure you that there is no surplus of parking on North Buckout Street. In fact, the parking situation here has become a serious problem, compromising the quality of life for its residents. For us, leaving your house in the middle of the day to do marketing, for example, means that there will probably be no spot to come back to. This is not an exaggeration. Here are some points to consider. There are only two homes on North Buckout that have small driveways that provide off-street parking for some of their vehicles. There are also large multifamily dwellings that have residents who use North Buckout as their primary parking area. Post office employee and patron parking demand is a serious problem. In addition, the drive-by mailbox creates ongoing traffic and congestion. El Cerrizo restaurant employees in patron parking create a large parking demand well into the evening hours as well. Matheson Park visitors often park on North Buckout. Day trippers into Manhattan use our street as a commuter lot well beyond the six-hour limit. Village residents with parking permits from upper blocks will often park on North Buckout Street, especially during bad weather, to shorten their walk to the train. With the six-hour parking limit as it stands, people have learned that if they simply park after 9:00 AM, after the tires have been chalked, they can park for an unlimited period of time without being ticketed. We have included our names along with other North Buckout Street neighbors on a letter already submitted to the board by Tom Thacker, but are drafting our own letter to emphasize just how difficult it can be to live on the street. That said, we ask you to reconsider your plan for North Buckout Street. It is already at capacity and should be included in a two-hour parking zone from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. In addition, since the post office has hours on Saturday, we suggest that some regulation be extended to Saturdays as well. While most of the other suggestions within your plan, as outlined, appear to be reasonable and helpful, we wonder if the burden of the six-hour parking option for day trippers could be shared by the upper, middle, and lower zones. It's nice for people to have a short walk to the train as well, it won't hurt them, we assure you. We request that the board reconsider other streets for six-hour parking, such as South Buckout and South Continent, where there is less density and more off-street parking available to residents. Finally, could the use of South Buckout lot be modified in some way? So it's a serious quality of life issue for residents of North Buckout Street. Again, Arthur and Ramona Segretti. Okay, now from Meg Lindsey. New parking regulations. Being semi-retired and trying to stay in Irvington is a challenge. Trying to park to get to the, into the city by train is difficult at best, and now the regulations proposed will limit further day parking. It seems like the proposals are mostly to accommodate residents, employees, and businesses, and attract shoppers. Occasionally, for medical appointments or business meetings, my husband or I have to get to the city, but it is almost impossible to park for anything except afternoon appointments. It's gotten more and more difficult. We live in Field Point condominiums, Upper Level, and it's too far to walk if we carry anything. Please take into consideration many of us who need options of six or more hours parking sporadically. Okay, Amy Bernstein. Parking bills and feedback. Hi, Lawrence, I am an Irvington resident who works part-time in New York City, and I utilize the six-hour parking regulations because there are never any metered spots remaining by the time I head to work around 12:00 noon. I am concerned that the six-hour spots will only be in effect on North Buckout and North Astor Streets. I often cannot find a spot and need to park blocks away. It seems the six-hour spots on South Buckout and South Astor, and the lower part of Main Street are also utilized by folks like me. I am concerned that there will not be sufficient parking for people who take shorter trips into the city. I would like to ask that the proposed area is expanded to include those south streets, as well as the lower part of Main Street, including two blocks from the train. Thanks, Amy. Okay, and now from Nikki Cottington. Comments on proposed parking changes. To the mayor and trustees, I commend you for your attempt to tackle the thoroughly and complicated topic of parking. I have two comments. Thank you for preserving the six-hour parking at the bottom of Main Street, which, as you note, is used for day trippers to New York City, and in my opinion, and out of many residents I know, is an invaluable source for that purpose, since the metered spots along the road typically fill up early in the day, and the remaining spots, if any, are far away. I only hope that the proposed changes above Buckout Street don't put undue pressure on these, on those six-hour spots. Although I'm not a resident of the district in question, I am somewhat concerned about the impacts of the new restrictions on those who live there, so I hope that you will listen carefully to the feedback and the questions you receive from those residents to make sure there are no unintended consequences. For example, the 72-hour limit, Chapter 213, Section 6D of the Residential Parking, uh, Residential Parking Permit Code. What do you, what do they do if they have no off-street parking and they go on vacation for a week? Parking in the village already is a factor in property values, not to mention quality of life. I'm sure you wouldn't wish to exacerbate those impacts while attempting to make things better. Thank you, Nikki Cottington. Okay, so those are the letters so far that we received mainly about parking in general. So we'll go on to the public comment period. I'd like to make two comments about that. We're going to limit everyone to three minutes, as per usual, and I would like to ask anyone who's got... who's got comments about the parking to wait until the public hearing, which is going to be just a few minutes from now when we get to it. So if there are public comments about other topics from anyone, please come forward.
I would just like to ask the village...
Just do me a favor, say your name and...
Joe Clark. I just wanted to ask you guys regarding paving. On North and South Dearman Street, the road is atrocious, and I could show you some pictures where the cobblestones are actually coming through the road. And I checked with the village superintendent, and this street's not on for years to come. And there's many streets that are being paved that are in much better shape than North or South Dearman Street. Those streets were supposed to get paved, I believe, I want to say five years ago, but time escapes me, when they replaced the water main. Part of the water main replacement was they were going to reconstruct the street. Never happened. They did a patch in the middle of the road, and that was the end of that. I'd like to ask you, all the trustees, just take a look at North and South Dearman, especially the south side, on the southwest side. I mean, literally, you know, the pavers are coming up and everything, and I think the village really needs to take a look at this before it becomes a liability issue. It's that bad. And including some of the curbs on the other side, there's gaps between the pavement and the curb of, you know, probably eight to ten inches, which someone could easily turn her ankle in or whatever, but, you know, I'd just like to see the village look at that and possibly do something about it.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to the consent agenda. I know that one item, 7H, got updated. If we vote that, just look at that. So if there's no questions, I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone move.
A second. Second one. Okay, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, now we're opening a public hearing to consider a local law amending the solid-state chapter of the code of the Irvington, Village of Irvington with respect to bulk waste. I just want to point out that this is the first public hearing, and we are not voting on it tonight. It's going to be left open until our next meeting, at least, and for additional public input, but at that point, we probably will in fact have a resolution to vote on. So Mary Ann, could you tell us a little...
Yeah, I know. A motion to open.
Oh, yes, a motion to open. Thank you very much. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
Someone.
I don't know why I'm looking at you. I need a second on that one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I guess we need to vote for that, right? Okay.
This is originally... Yeah, I got everything except... The reason I wanted is to read what the definition of bulk waste is. Essentially, what it says is that the village... No, no, no. What this law does is it provides that the village will charge a fee for picking up bulk waste, and bulk waste is defined as material too large to be placed in thirty-two-gallon waste collection containers, such as appliances and furniture. Do not leave it out. It's going to be a fee, and the fee is not yet determined, and that's not part of this public law. I mean, it doesn't have to be part of the law. The court is due by resolution once the local law gets...
All right, so I think, I mean, this was a recommendation that originally came out of GPDF a number of years ago, I think, was to have some sort of a fee on the bulk. I know DPW has been asking about it because, you know, there's a lot of stuff picked up and moved for transfer that some of it gets recycled, some of it becomes literally bulk garbage, but... So this is to try to bring a little bit of balance in, in terms of the labor cost to deal with this. So anyone want to speak during the public hearing on this particular topic?
Can we just hear from the village why we feel this is necessary?
It's my understanding, and, you know, many other municipalities are doing this as well, because there's a real cost involved in terms of the labor, and when we're talking about just, I don't know, like a sofa or refrigerator, it's one thing, right? But sometimes there's quite a bit of material that requires multiple trips by the folks from DPW to pick it up, and then it's staged, and then they do do some bulk transfer at that point from the DPW facility. And I think it's really a matter of... There were different schemes around, and different municipalities use other schemes, and some people have had tags, we buy tags to put on the stuff. The way this is, is, you know, as far as I understand, it will be a single fee that's charged and billed to the customer after the pickup.
Let me ask you this, Mark.
I have to ask you, Joe, to come forward, okay?
Yeah, my name is Joe Clark. There used to be... I've lived here all my life, so I'm going to date myself a little bit. We used to have a spring and fall cleanup, where you could put that kind of stuff out, and the village would come around and, you know, pick that up. I fully understand how this is an expense to do, and, you know, as people call to come get this stuff, but in that law, couldn't we put something in there where we designate once or twice a year, the spring and the fall, where people wanted to spring clean or whatever, and get rid of some of this stuff, and instead of having to handle it twice, they would use one truck, pick it up, and take it right to the dump? To try and give people a little bit of a break to, you know, when you want to do something like this, instead of doing it on a, you know, a per-call basis?
I mean, it's something we can talk about. I have no problem with the notion of, on the face of it, the notion of like a spring or fall cleanup, where we encourage people to sort of aggregate their waste, but I don't...
As a kid, we used to go garbage picking. It was crazy.
I don't think that's solid, like, for people like me right now who's driving their house.
Oh, right, right.
There's a lot of stuff that can't get into the dumpster, but has to be picked up.
Fully understood.
So we need both, but I...
Yeah, but it just gives you a break, say, okay, if you do it, you know, April 15th, you know, we're going to have a bulk pickup around the village.
Then it still raises the question of additional labor costs that now would be aggregated on people.
Right, right, but, I mean, you've got to take that into consideration, your taxes, too, you know?
And we're also... One of the reasons for this is to encourage people to think a little creatively about recycling or other ways of donating some of their items.
Right, but, you know, just something to consider.
I think in conjunction with this, I don't know, I think that GPDF had developed like a list of, you know, other places to handle this kind of stuff, like Recycle, and website and that sort of thing. So there are places that some of this could be reused, recycled, not just put into the landfill or whatever, wherever it goes.
Well, I understand that we didn't establish the cost of court debt at this time, but they were meant to be relatively reasonable, and it was per pickup. So we weren't saying it wasn't per item, and you have a large amount of things, it would still be the base fee for a pickup, as long as it was one time that the man had to go here to your location. We established it, like $25. It wasn't going to be, or less than if you had someone come pick it up, or a refrigerator, sofas, house clean after. Now, just to really kind of cover some of the overhead that's needed for dumpsters and other things.
Okay, anyone else have something to discuss about bulk waste fees? Pickup fees? Going once? Going twice? Okay, so we will keep this public hearing open, and we will discuss amongst ourselves the notion of if there's something that could be done for some better public education in terms of encouraging aggregation of it, you know. So now we get to the, probably the hot topic for everyone tonight, and that's the public hearing, considering local laws amending the parking regulation in the village downtown Now, these regulations are very detailed and atomistic, I mean, refer to very specific areas, blocks, blah, blah, blah. The details are in the regulation itself that's been put with the agenda. Larry did have a one-and-a-half-page summary, which I was going to read, and then Mary Ann was going to add in anything that she thought was pertinent, and then we'll open it for folks from the audience, the gallery, whatever you call, the community, to come forward. Somebody would probably already read this letter from Larry, so I apologize if it's redundant, but it's a good context. In August, the Board of Trustees will begin review of a series of proposed local laws that will revise the parking regulations for the downtown area. These revisions are the most sweeping changes to Irvington's parking regulations since the early 1990s. There are two main goals for the revisions. Match parking demand with parking supply and simplify the regulations. If Main Street were divided into three parking districts based on geography, upper, middle, lower, it would be readily apparent that the middle parking district, defined as Main Street from Dutcher to Ferris Streets, would be the area with the highest demands on parking. There are many residents, employees of businesses, and patrons of businesses all put heavy demand on the limited parking in this district. At the same time, for example, the lower parking district, defined as Main Street from Astor to Dutcher Streets, generally has a surplus of available parking throughout the day. The new regulations seek to alter this imbalance by allowing on-street parking only in the specific districts for the employees of downtown businesses. By way of an example, an employee of a business located on Main Street between Dutcher and Ecker Streets, middle parking district, might not be allowed to park in the middle parking district where the business is located. At the same time that parking is being redistributed, the regulations throughout the downtown area are being simplified. Currently, hourly parking limits vary widely and can be one, two, four, or six hours, depending on the street. The new regulations will standardize the time limit to two hours throughout the downtown area, and a few scattered fifteen-minute parking spaces to accommodate certain businesses. The only exception would be the lower part of Main Street, including North Astor and North Buckout Streets, closest to the Irvington train station, which will remain as six-hour parking to allow for short day trips into New York City. It should be noted that downtown residents that hold a residential parking permit are allowed, as they are now, to park on the side streets during the day in excess of the posted time limits, so those residents are unaffected by the hourly limit changes. On a final note, the current regulations effectively prohibit overnight parking of vehicles on the street, except for certain streets in the downtown area. The new regulations will help residents, many of whom do not have driveways, by allowing overnight parking on all downtown streets. While the public hearing will open August 21st, it is expected to remain open at least until September 18th meeting. Please forward the comments, any comments you have to Larry Schopfer at his Irvington address, Lschopfer@irvingtonny.gov. The following is a summary of the parking regulation changes proposed. Change Main Street to two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, for the entire length, except for specific spaces that are currently fifteen minutes parking. Currently, nearly all of Main Street is one-hour parking, 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday. Change all Main Street side streets to two-hour parking, 8:00 to 8:00, Monday through Friday, except near North Buckout-North-Astor Streets. Currently, nearly all the side streets are six-hour parking, 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday. North Buckout-North-Astor Streets remain six-hour parking, 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday. Modify residential parking permit rules to make the permit be effective from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Eliminate overnight parking restrictions on Main Street and all of the side streets. Modify the Aqueduct parking rules to allow for non-resident parking during working hours, 8:00 to 8:00, and resident parking at all times. Make ten permits available in the Field Point parking lot for non-resident parking during working hours, 8:00 to 8:00. Modify residential parking permit rules to create three districts of parking, upper, middle, and lower, as follows. Lower Astor-Buckout-Cotnet-Main Street, between Astor and Dutcher. Middle Dutcher-Ecker-Ferris-Main Street, between Dutcher and Ferris. Upper Brunel-Aqueduct-Germain-Broadway-Home-Croton-Main Street, between Ferris and Broadway. Modify residential parking permit rules to allow issuance a limited number of parking permits to businesses in the Main Street area for use by employees. Permits would be issued on a first-come-first basis for any of the three parking districts. All right, so that is the summary that Larry attached. And now, Mary Ann?
Yeah, I think that covers everything. I marked up the things that were important, and those were all in there. Only one other thing, I mean, it's kind of so obvious, but it is a change, and that is that, you know, double parking's not allowed anywhere in the village. Now, there's only certain streets, it's not allowed on this region, so it's not allowed anywhere, which the police don't allow anyway, so that's it. The reason that's not very explicit is there's always going through making all these changes, going through the... Yeah, all these changes, and there are a million different sections I had to fix, and I was just curious, double parking, so this is getting fixed, too.
What I'd like to ask is if folks would try to, when you come forward, state your name, three-minute limit, although... And I'd like to ask, if you've already had your letter read, why don't you wait toward let everyone else speak and then come up? And finally, I know it's hard, but it's hard on everyone, so if you have something to say that's been said a lot by other people, maybe just go to some other, you know, you could mention it in passing, but without going into deep detail, because at some point, you know, the night gets long. So let's start. Anyone care to come forward and share their thoughts?
Hi, good evening. My name is Julia Stunets. I'm new to the area, and new because I bought the building at 16 North Astor, where Loretta's main station is. As you know better than I do the history of Irvington, next door to the, if you're facing, away from the river, facing the buildings, to the right is condominiums. There are homes and more condominiums to the left of the street. Currently, my building is, has one business in it. There is an empty commercial space. That person moved her business, I believe, further up Main Street, and there are empty offices upstairs. So I just wanted to make you aware that the long-term plan for the building is for me to redevelop it with my company. It's going to stay to commercial units, and I think that this is a good plan for Irvington to have this area by the train station revitalized and to have more businesses there. So I would urge you to consider not having everything six hours. We definitely, I don't know exactly what the businesses are going to be, but I do anticipate that they will need short-term parking. Now, as part of the plans, when we get to this point, which we are not at this point, I will need to submit plans that show parking, and we are planning to have some parking within the building underneath, but obviously, you know, it's not big enough, and I can't dig down the floor. So I would just urge you to consider what is going to be happening there. It's not stasis, it's going to be dynamically changed, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bobby Manzi. I own River City Grill at the top of the hill on Main Street on Broadway. I just wanted to point out that my concern is that the lot across the street, and we have half-hour parking on the street, which doesn't really, you know, help out too much there, and we have the two-hour lot across the street, which is always really crowded. My concern is that customers, or maybe the employees from down on Main Street, are going to be given permits up on the top, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that there really is, you know, the problem of parking is probably all over town, and it's just as much up at the top of the hill as it is on Main Street, so keep that in mind. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Knowles, and I live on Main Street, and right now, we currently park on Continent Street. We have parking passes. I actually have one pass, and my husband doesn't. I actually have one pass, and my husband doesn't. So from what I understand, it will be, Continet Street will be changed to two-hour parking. However, if you have a parking permit, it is six-hour parking. What are the considerations for when the time comes that we have a lot of snow, and there's nowhere to park, and you can't park on Main Street? Because you have to wait for the snow to be removed. That is a big issue where we are.
I'm sorry for chucking, but I think you're, well, this is correct. One second, a minute. If you have a parking permit, I don't think you're limited to six hours.
Right, so it changes to two hours, but if you have a park, but there's no, but then it turns out that when this, when it's heavy snow, and you're waiting for the streets to be plowed, there's limited parking. Maybe there's 20 spots, and then there's people on Main Street, but then you have nowhere to park. So let's say all of the parking is taken up on Continet Street because of the snow. Where are you to park? If you park on Main Street, are you moving your car every two hours? If you live on Main Street? I mean, will you suspend it to two hours? Because that hasn't always happened in the past. On the side streets, between the street cleaning, it's alternate side of the street cleaning, and then...
That is definitely something we should look into, to make sure if we're changing these hour limitations, that they're clear guidelines for when they're suspended due to weather conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Joseph Cassillo. I'm a dentist on Main Street. I live next door to Christine. My office is next to where she lives. The question I have for businesses, have you decided how they're going to be allotted? How many per business? And in zones, where are you going to park? I have three employees and myself, and we have no place to park except for the six-hour limits on the side streets. So again, the question is, every two hours if we're parking on Main Street, are we going to be moving, adding traffic, adding congestion, endanger pedestrians, not to mention pollution? So there's a lot of issues to changing the six hours to two hours. I don't really see where that's going to help anything, except maybe make it worse. And in regard to the snow comment, this past winter, we had at least 30% of the spaces occupied by snow. And they were chalking, and some people say they don't chalk, but they were actually out-chalking the cars that were parked in spaces. So I called the police department, said, well, that's the law. And I said, well, are we going to move the car to if there's no space to move? Well, that's the law, so keep that in mind, too.
Just to answer the question on the employee parking, I think that up to two.
Two on the employee parking.
Up to two.
And how it isn't be allotted?
What happens to the rest of the...
It says first-come, first served.
I'm just telling you with the little...
I'm just saying, so it's not, it's not an easy answer.
That was going to be my first question, is what do you do when you have more than two employees, and everybody is two-hour parking? Everybody that works in Town Hall is an employee. Where are they going to park? Are they going to be exempt? Are they not going to be held to the same standards that everybody else is? Are the village employees going to come down and move their car every two hours? How is this going to be handled?
I don't remember seeing any exception, but...
Yeah, so, you know, our police officers, or everybody upstairs, there's probably 15 people in this building. And now, you know, I mean, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. You know, I have 14 employees, where, you know, and my guys are out in the field. They're not even here to move their car every two hours. I feel like we're creating an issue. We don't have a problem up on Deerman Street, but by the law that's proposed, we're going to have a problem. It's detrimental to a lot of businesses.
And the reason for this public hearing is to air all of these concerns. One of the things that was very evident from listening as the letters were being read, this is a pretty much classic example of who's ox is gored. In trying to address some of the concerns and issues, obviously, it creates other issues, and sometimes it requires balance. So there were letters, you know, really concerned about changing the time limits on certain streets, and other letters asking to preserve those six hours. You know, we start from the premise that we are going to take a look at all the issues and try and come up with the best solution that we can that minimally...
No, I understand, this isn't easy. No, I, and let me say this, I lived on Ecker Street for 15 years, so I understand moving your car and finding a space, and it's not easy. But I think the board needs to really look at the business community as well as the residents, because, you know, I mean, in order to have a vital downtown, you need businesses that can survive. And it's very difficult to do business in Irvington as it is, because it's basic, you know, it's not a big town, and, you know, if it's going to be hard to come here and park, or you're going to go into a restaurant, like Bobby said, and you're going to come out and have a $50 ticket on your car, well, guess what? I'm not coming back. You know, and most people that are going to park and go to a restaurant like Mima's or one of them, you know, they're going to be in there longer than two hours, and they're going to come out, and they're going to have a parking ticket. And the other question I have is, why eight o'clock? I mean, that makes it even harder on these restaurants than the downtown area. Right now, the six-hour parking, I believe, goes to six.
Two hours stops at eight o'clock.
Stops at, right.
So if you have a seven o'clock dinner reservation...
Well, some of us are getting older. We go out at five, you know. Yeah, and if you have a child, you're going out early.
And if you go to dinner and theater, you need...
Right, the Town Hall Theater. Yeah, you may come out at five o'clock, but you go to Town Hall Theater.
Business serving to the restaurant.
So, I mean, those things really need to be looked at. The other thing that's in there is residents can park for 72 hours. Well, 72 hours is really 144, because what happens, and I'm speaking from a retired police officer, is you can park for 72 hours before somebody, you're illegal, and then your neighbor might complain, you know, this car's been here for 72 hours. Well, now we're going to chalk. Okay? Well, the 72 hours starts from the time the tire was chalked. So now you have another 72 hours before you have to move your car. So your car really could sit there for six days without being moved. That's a little excessive. You know, it would bother me if it was in front of my house. So I really, there's no, I don't see any reason why, you know, someone can't move their car within a 24-hour or 36-hour period.
Is that a change, or is that the existing regulation?
Well, no, because you had six-hour mark, so you caught them on the six-hour cycle. So now, you know, it would, well, actually, you have a resident's permit, yeah, so, you know, that might have been there. But I, you know, I know people where cars have sat there literally for over a week, and in the winter, when you're trying to clear the street or whatever, you know, that's a problem. Yeah, exactly, you know. And then the other thing I was going to ask about is commercial vehicles. We park some of our vehicles down on Buckout Street now. We have a village permit, and, you know, we park them down there. My guys take their car and park there, and they take the truck, and we go to work, whatever. Now, one of the things you're talking about is commercial vehicles that, they're only half-ton. Well, I don't know if, a half a ton is a very, very lightweight vehicle. I would like to see that changed to a three-quarter ton, which is, you know, a standard van or whatever. Once you get into a one-ton, then it's very easy for the police to tell it's a one-ton vehicle because it has four back tires. Now, you're going to have to run registrations, see what the tonnage is. This, you know, I think that should be changed to three-quarter ton, which is a standard work van. And there's, in the downtown area, there is a lot of tradesmen. I mean, historically, you know, blue-collar workers lived in the downtown area, although it's getting a little expensive to do that now. But many people are, you know, not speaking for myself, but many guys are one-man shop, you know, and, you know, their work truck is their personal vehicle as well. And now, all of a sudden, you know, if it's over a half-ton, they can't park it in front of their house, they can't come home. This poses a lot of problems, you know. I mean, one of my employees, who lives on Main Street, and he parks across from the middle school, you know, he's on call, he works 24 hours a day, he's on call. And now, all of a sudden, he can't take his truck home. So these are some of the other issues that I want to look at.
Could you comment on that just quickly? I mean, part of the issue we have with people really concerned about access safety for larger vehicles blocking, you know, taking up more than one parking space.
Oversized vehicles are different. That's a totally different thing.
That's what we're recommending, so maybe it was...
Yeah. I understand oversized vehicles, yeah. I don't want to see a tow truck in front of my house either. I understand that, but, you know, like, up where we are, you know, we park a couple of our vehicles up on Deerman Street, and...
It's a business street, it's all business.
Now, we can't park our vehicle there, so I think I exceeded my...
I think so, but thank you very much.
It's tough when there's a lot of people on my job.
Who else has got something to say? Well, can we wait until we get everyone else? So...
Yeah, Christie Polly, I've lived in Irvington my life, just a few years less than Joey. I'm assuming when you say all side streets, for six-hour parking for residents, you're including Jaffe Park, which is the widest of all the side streets?
No, there were no changes in those streets.
Why not? So it's the widest street, they park there overnight, everybody else is not allowed to. They don't use their driveway, they park on Ferris Street. Our parking on Ferris Street is a night problem. When the ambulance corps has a training, we have to wait for 10:00, 10:30 to move our cars to get them underway inside the street. When the theaters going on, we have to move our cars at 10:00, 10:30. Ours is a night problem, really. Besides the day problem, we have a night problem, too. So why not include Jaffe Park on the side streets, which it is a side street? It's the widest one on Main Street. And it would alleviate a lot of problems for everybody on Ferris Street, and even the more, the days that, we have restaurants in the corner now, we have a problem late, too. That's all I'm going to say.
Chris, can I tell you, sometimes it's very hard to get parking to come to this meeting.
Hey, we live with that.
I know.
So there's Jaffe Park, it's a village street. We should be allowed to park there, too.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
I'm Tom Cicciari, and I also live on Ferris Street here, number 25, for 51 years. And I have a van also, and I use it for everything, and I wish I could keep parking on my street.
Yeah, I was going to ask you...
I have a one-ton van, but it's the same size. And I pull my boat, and I do things with it.
So it's, it's not in the right weight class, but the size is...
It's the same size.
Same size as a half-ton? So maybe we should do it by dimension?
Yeah, I think so.
Because that's the concern. The concern is dimensions rather than the weight.
If it's in the parking space...
Come back, so you're worried about sitting around.
That's a fairly easy fix.
Yeah, this is a spot, and you know the parking problem half here, you know, so the theater is our biggest problem. Thank you.
Linda Kruger, I've only been here 20 years, so I'm pretty new, I guess. But I just, I'm not sure I understand all the ins and outs of the policy, but I was concerned about access to the aqueduct parking lot, and there was some indication in the new policy that there might be restrictions on housing, how many permits you get, and it's normally been two permits kind of per household, and I was hoping it could stay that way, because I think most households have two cars these days, so I don't know if that's changing. It's not changing.
We're not changing, Larry.
It says one...
Some of the spots available during the day to not...
I understand that, and there seems to be enough space there, and so as long as, I just, because I have no opportunity, I have no driveway, right? So we really rely on the aqueduct parking lot for our...
I didn't, I haven't heard any changes to the two permits per household.
Okay, it sounded like it might go down to one, so...
That's the way I read it, is that it was going to one, and then in some very special cases, possibly two, but that's the way I read it.
Well, I don't think that was a change.
It was unclear.
Do you mean about the resident parking permits?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think that's a change. I mean, you know, I have to tell you substantively, and I was just almost being distraught on this, but wait a minute. I don't think the numbers were changed.
I think it always depended how many cars you had in your household, as to how many permits you... That's my understanding. Maybe it changed, but I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, that didn't change.
It doesn't, it didn't change. It would still be allowed to get to...
And whatever flexibility there was before, for whatever reasons, is still in there. That was not changed.
That's all the same. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
It's in the local law, 19C, on page four.
Linda, I think you said proof of having two vehicles, right?
Right, 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 of course, yeah, yeah, okay. Fine, okay, thank you.
One-vehicle households, and one-two-vehicle households.
So two-vehicle households, too. But when you're looking at this thing, the things that are the changes are in italics. If it's, if it's just in plain text, that's what it was before. The changes are either in italics or strikeouts. So when you're looking at it, it's a little bit easier to tell what the changes are.
All right, next. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Christina Lamalino, and I own 20 North Astor Street, one of the two small multifamilies that were built during the Civil War, so obviously have no driveways. And I'm very happy that the board is considering how to remediate the problem, but it's a very complex problem with many competing interests, as obvious. And I'm here to say that I, things have been very confusing on North Astor Street. There's, there are many spots which up till now have been completely empty at night because the perception is that there isn't overnight parking there, and this looks like it will alleviate that, and the existing spots will be available for people with resident permits to park on their own block on North Astor. I have a couple of questions, though. When we speak about the spots on North Astor Street, are we talking about only the spots on the eastern side of North Astor, or are we talking also about spots that line up against the train tracks on the western side of North Astor?
Well, I think there's only about six spots over there that are actually village-controlled, if I remember, on the west side, near the tracks.
So the others are controlled by Metro and Earth?
That, I don't know, there may be three or four, a couple, maybe, on this, I don't remember, but I thought not the full set were under village control. And then there's a small set that's part of the bizarre.
I realize, and we lost a spot or two when the new condominiums went on at the corner. And now I hear that the building next door to mine is planning curb cuts that will potentially further eliminate spots. But that's another, that's a story for another day. Another question I had is the library spots, the diagonal spots in front of the library. After hours, are those available to the residents?
I think so.
You got a lot of spots there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the way it reads. Right now, it says something about employees only, you know.
Why you drive to the library? There's the street...
I can't say for every space, you know. I think these really specific questions about the part of the building Larry's got to address.
Okay, I'll write to Larry then.
Well, Larry, hopefully when we continue this hearing, you know, again, this is, we want to hear your concerns, but Larry is the one who spent infinite numbers of hours trying to...
I'm sure he's got a big flow chart up in his office or something.
So we're not putting, we want to be very clear. There's three of us here tonight, we are not putting anybody off. We want to hear all of these concerns, but some of the very specific drill down was being considered, but hasn't been considered, and the answer to some of these questions we really need him for.
But we'll pass it out, I mean, we'll watch the video of it.
Okay. And then I had one other comment, which is that I'm really concerned with resident parking, hopefully somewhere near where you live, if not on North Astor, then on North Buckout, or on Main Street, or on Bridge Street, or somewhere in the downtown area. But I see that the thrust of many of the new parking regulations is to, and the assumption, even in the summary that was read, was that there's a lot of vacant spaces in the area closer to the river, and I guess you call that the lower parking area, is that what you're calling it? As opposed to the middle or the upper? And that employees of the businesses are being sort of pressed out of the middle area into the lower area.
And the upper.
And the upper area, right. And that also the change to six-hour parking from two-hour parking will further burden those lower spaces because they will be taken up by commuters.
Could I just correct one?
Sure.
Because a lot of South Buckout and North Buckout and that southern block of Main Street is already six hours.
Yeah, we're not changing it to six hours, it's already is six hours.
And North Buckout, though, is being changed from, isn't it? It's already six? North Buckout is six, okay, and we've got North Astor, is North Astor six now? The concern is that commuter parking is competing, obviously, with resident parking, and that employee parking is also competing with resident... And that employee parking is also competing with resident parking. And that if the thrust is to move the midsection into the lower area, it further burdens the resident parking in the lower area.
Just to put a clarification in this part, I do recall, or specifically, businesses would be given only a certain number of employee parking permits. So it's not like every employee of every business is going to be sent to park on your street. You know, or there will be a limited number of employee parking. The idea is to increase, improve the flow for everybody. Obviously, it's not gonna work for everybody. And it's not gonna work for everybody every day, you know. But that is certainly the intent. And it's not just a willing, like, okay, all you employees go park, you know, on Astor and Buckets. That's not.
I'm sure you've also considered that six-hour parking attracts commuters.
Well, there are commuters. It's not gonna, there are commuters. And, you know, if you heard the letters read, there were people who, you know, there's a real interest in keeping those spots so that people can go to the city for doctor's appointments, job interviews, et cetera.
That's important, important, no doubt. But I would also say that there has to be balance with the needs of the residents who face parking every day, not just a few times a year going in for a doctor's appointment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hello. I'm Arthur Segretti.
Ramona Segretti.
So we wrote that letter that you read earlier. Thank you very much for taking the time to read it. So I think I understood the point that you were trying to make about the six-hour parking is that if you carve out a space and everything else becomes a two-hour limit, then it sort of becomes, kind of, people will flood into those areas. And then it becomes an only option for them. But I just wanted to say that we're here. We showed up tonight to sort of be here in person, in addition to the letter. So we would urge you really to consider keeping, making North Buckout a two-hour zone and sort of spreading the six-hour zone also in our letter. We talked about sharing that burden, not just located around the train station. I think there's this like fundamental belief that, you know, if we're gonna have six-hour parking for the day trippers, it needs to be close to the station. And, you know, there's something to be said about sharing that burden so people can walk back and forth. Like, walking three blocks, four blocks is really not a hardship to go to the train.
And I'd also like to add that it would be, I think it would be helpful if the board considered the, you know, the characteristics of the individual street. As we said in our letter, North Buckout Street, almost nobody has a driveway. There are other blocks that I understand may have a lot of parking issues as well, but that residents do have driveways that can fit one or two cars. We have no options. And everybody on our street has at least two cars. So when everybody is home, all the spots are taken already. And so, but they're not taken because there are other people parking all day, you know. So it's, I think, you know, I don't know if North Buckout Street is the right street to do this because it is such a hardship. And I think as, you know, our taxes have skyrocketed, and I sort of feel like our quality of life is just going down every year because of this.
So the two-hour zone on North Buckout would be out.
I made a very clear letter. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Actually, I don't, I'm reading through this, and you know what it's nonsense is. There's pieces here, pieces here. I don't, well, they live on North Buckout. I don't think it's six-hour now.
What was that?
Right now, it isn't six-hour on North Buckout.
It is six-hour.
Oh, it is six-hour.
But the issue is that if you.
You know what part of it is? And this is what I'm thinking. Is the parking signs don't necessarily.
I mean, that's, thank you. And one of the big points is that, you know, there've been a lot of complaints about signage not matching regulations, regulations not being readable. Part of this is trying to clear up the regulation to make it readable, but also signage is the task for the village to get the signage in line with what the real regulation is. Right now, a lot of things, the signs don't match what's being in the code or what's being enforced. I'm sure people know that.
I had two other things.
If no one else, if everyone else is.
Wait, wait, wait. Does anybody else who hasn't spoken yet want to say something?
Hang on until I get to the mic.
Like Tommy just said, and you just pointed out, too, as tradesmen, what if we're working someone's house? You know, in downtown area, where, you know, gonna be there all day.
There's an exception for that.
You know? Okay. And the other thing is, has the village looked into acquiring parking somehow? Like, is it possible to extend the aqueduct parking lot further down the aqueduct? I'll just throw that out there. What about putting the deck on the Astor Street parking lot? What's that?
That's actually been discussed as a possibility by people involved in the comprehensive plan update.
We can do underground parking. We want to look creatively at.
I think we missed the boat when they built that building down there. We could have made them do it.
And also, I mean, as you know, further down on the other side, you know, on the south side, as you're going along Astor, South Astor Street and where the parking lot, the main metro north, there's essentially, you know, a 20, 30-foot-high power site there that you could build.
Oh, you'd be, after the powerhouse you're talking about?
This area is, it might be.
Past the sand pile?
They were not, you know, the last time someone talked about that in terms of a development, they were discouraged by the public reaction to, you know, parking structure in that area.
Yeah. I mean, I know parking structure in Irvington is like a four-letter word, but it's kind of come to the point that we really need to look at that as a realistic alternative to relieve some of the issues. The town's growing.
We have a look at that also, but that's not.
No, I understand.
Did you have anything else, Joe?
Nope.
Okay, one more time, and then let's, for you two folks that already spoke, and then if there's no one else new, then we're gonna continue.
I was just wondering if there's any plans to change or specifically remove the, I believe it's seven parking spaces just north of the FEE building on the west side of Broadway.
In fact, as far as I know, some of those spaces to the north, on the west side of the exit, are being removed. However, right, yes, they're adding spaces to the upper parking lot at the top of Main Street. They're adding.
What I'll point out is that I believe that, I have all my employees parked down there. I know some of the Good Deli, and we all try to park down there. It's out of the way, leaves the spaces for the customers. You're gonna take a two-hour parking now into the municipal lot, if you take those away. So I'm not sure, is there a reason we're taking those?
Yeah, traffic safety, visibility, state code. I mean, that was all covered during the planning board review.
Right.
Really.
Related to the new construction project?
The board of trustees also, as you reviewed it, I think they had to approve it.
We had approved the change to the upper parking lot.
Which will add spaces.
They're increasing this upper parking lot?
Larry had reached out to the business owners on this street. It came up, probably almost a year ago.
Okay.
Does Larry have your email address?
Who's that?
Does Larry have your email?
Apparently not.
So send an email.
Okay.
One of the things that's very frustrating is people, like, weigh in sometime very late in the process because they didn't know what's happening. Just send, if you send an email to Larry or to any of us on board, then you will get a response, and he will be in front.
Give him the context of where you are, so he knows.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, I think he would too. Okay, any last calls, someone?
I just wanted, I was.
Can you have, please come to the mic. It's because we need to have a public.
It's not really an additional.
Just wondering what the process is as you move forward in considering all this information. What are your next?
We'll be considering, it will be another public hearing. We'll be considering all of this information, and that will be responses to the concerns raised. Again, Larry needs to be part of this process. Ultimately, we, I'm sure this is not the final draft you're looking at, you know, so there will be, but again, people, everybody's not gonna be happy here, you know. So we're gonna do our best, the best balance that works best for everybody.
Well, personally, I don't want to see parking meters on Main Street. That's just my opinion. Every time I go into Tarrytown, I just get a normal amount of parking meters. Okay. So we'll keep the hearing open, and thank you for everyone's input.
Please continue to write, that's probably the best way, you know, come to the meetings also. But if you write with your concerns, then we all have time to really think about it, and it's right in front of us.
So now we're gonna go on to item number 10. Should I pause for people who want to? People staying for the municipal government stuff? So that clears everyone.
Apparently, nobody clears.
Okay. So we now have a volunteer appointment to the Irvington Woods Committee. And let me flip my pages to get to that. There's just too many parking pages.
He's still in parking. Here, take mine and give me your package.
I'm almost there. Okay. Okay. The resolution reads as follows. I've resolved to appoint Hagey O'Hara as a member of the Irvington Woods Committee for a term to expire December 2017. So I would like to get a motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. So now we have the approval of the 2017-18 snow and ice agreement with New York State Department of Transportation. This is pretty much standard stuff. On a yearly basis, the village enters a contract with the New York State Department of Transportation, and they agree to plow the New York State roads like Broadway and for snow and ice removal, based on the types of storms, et cetera, et cetera. The Department of Transportation reimburses the village for their activity. So there are two resolutions, one of which is just to basically extend the contract for next year, and the second is to actually recoup additional expenses based on the weather conditions last year. So let's do the first one. So this is the approval of snow and ice agreement with New York State Department of Transportation. Unless, Brendan, do you have anything you want to add? Or is that an okay summary?
That's a, that's a very good summary. So you have the base amount, and the cost of the debt, and the additional amount that the village will get this year.
That we have to.
And we'll have to really.
So here is the first resolution, whereas the Village of Irvington and the New York State Department of Transportation wish to enter into an agreement providing for the village's removal of snow and ice from North and South Broadway, now therefore be resolved to approve the 2017-18 snow and ice agreement between the Village of Irvington and the New York State Department of Transportation, and to authorize the superintendent of Public Works to execute said agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You guys are like well-oiled machines.
You don't really have a choice.
Okay. Now going to the cost adjustment for last winter. Approval to change the estimated expenditure for the 2015-16 snow and ice agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation. Whereas the Village of Irvington and the New York State Department of Transportation have entered into an agreement providing the village's removal of snow and ice from North and South Broadway, now therefore be it resolved that due to the severity of the winter during 2015-16, the estimated expenditure was revised to reflect the additional lane miles of state roads that were plowed, treated during the winter season as per the attached agreement, and authorize the superintendent of Public Works, Greg Nielsen, to execute said agreement. And just as an aside, so people understand, I mean, the additional expenditure that we'll be getting revenue is about $1,500. So, you know, it's not crazy stuff, but it's good that the village can make it back. Okay, motion, please?
Second.
Second. You guys can take turns on the motions.
That's what we do.
Okay, good. Okay, next one. Award of Contract 2017-15 for 2017 Ford Taurus Police Interceptor Four-Door Pursuit Rated Sedan A, All-Wheel Drive for the Irvington Police Department. Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on August 2, 2017, at 11:00 a.m. in Village Hall, as follows. Schultz Ford Lincoln, total bid 24,800. Appears to be the only bid. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the bid from the lower bidder is in order and responsive to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved that the clerk treasurer is authorized to execute a contract for the purchase of a 2017 Ford Taurus Police Interceptor Four-Door Pursuit Rated Sedan All-Wheel Drive in the amount of $24,800 with Schultz Ford Lincoln, Inc. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we come to the controversial segment. This is a board resolution to, in support of the Paris Agreement. Whereas consensus exists among the world's leading climate scientists that global warming caused by emissions of greenhouse gases from human activities is among the most significant problems facing the world today. And whereas documented impacts of global warming include and are not limited to increased occurrences of extreme weather events, e.g. droughts and floods, adverse impacts on ecosystems, demographic patterns, and economic value chains. And whereas the New York State, the state of New York has mandated statewide reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to 40% below 1990 levels by 2050. And whereas responding to climate change, provides communities an opportunity to access first-mover advantage in the range of products, services, and know-how that transitioning to a climate-compatible future brings. And whereas the Paris Agreement resulted in a commitment from almost every nation to take action and enact programs to limit global temperature increase to less than 2 degrees Celsius with an expectation that this goal will be reduced to 1.5 degrees in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Irvington indicates its commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through an implementation of a climate action plan, and joins other U.S. cities in the Climate Mayors Network in adopting and supporting the goals of the Paris Agreement, and commits to exploring the potential benefits and costs of adopting policies and programs that promote the long-term goal of greenhouse gas emission reduction while maximizing economic and social co-benefits of such actions. And further resolve to authorize the mayor to join over 350 other mayors by signing the Climate Mayor's Statement. So may I have a?
Motion.
Motion.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna try to make a motion. Can I make a motion myself? I could.
No, we have to take three turns instead of three turns.
That's all right. I'll be, okay, so. All right. These are sticky ones. Okay, so. Basically, there are two projects the village is engaged in where they're getting federal funds. And getting or asking for federal funds. Already received?
We have received.
But we've got.
We have the projects in our budget, but this would be authorizing the acceptance of the money.
So.
We're wanting to accept.
We're wanting to accept...
Got the grants.
Yes.
We did get the grants, and we have to, and we have to put a certain amount of money, which is in the 20% range. Okay. So the, the first one is, the first project is, these are somewhat misleadingly titled, perhaps. Main Street Pedestrian Improvements. Now, this is basically Main Street, but from my understanding, the main focus of this is to ensure that all the corners have ADA-compatible curb cuts is the main focus of this up and down Main Street. Authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid eligible costs of a transportation-related aid project and appropriating funds thereof. Whereas, a project for the Village of Irvington Main Street Pedestrian Improvements, Village of Irvington, Westchester County, is eligible funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for apportionment of the costs such that the program be borne at the ratio of 80% federal funds and 20% non-federal funds, and whereas the Village of Irvington desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of cost of preliminary engineering and row incidentals. Now therefore, the Village Board duly convened does hereby resolve that the Irvington Village Board hereby approves the above-subject project, and it is hereby further resolved that the Village, Irvington Village Board hereby authorizes Village of Irvington to pay in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of preliminary engineering and row incidentals worked for the project proportions thereof, and it is further resolved that the sum of $31,000 is hereby, dollars, is hereby appropriated from the general fund surplus and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project, and it is further resolved that in the event the full federal and non-federal share cost of the project exceeds the amount appropriated above, the Irvington Village Board shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon the notification by the village administrator thereof, and it is further resolved that the village administrator of the Village of Irvington be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or applicable Marchiselli aid on behalf of the Village of Irvington with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and the municipality's first instance funding of project cost and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs and all project costs within appropriations thereof that are not so eligible, and it is further resolved that in addition to the village administrator, the following municipal titles, Commissioner of Public Works, Village Mayor, Village Engineer, Village Controller, Village Treasurer, are also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements or certifications on behalf of the municipality sponsor with New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project identified in the state-local agreement. Resolve that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project, and it is further resolved this resolution should do effect immediately. Now, let me say that, I asked Larry, he did say that we needed to read the whole thing and not some...
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
Okay. So it is pretty much at earful. Okay. That said, would someone like to...
Would you like to? Since you can.
Okay. I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The second one is much like the first one in terms of form. This is a form given to the village. It's not something that previously was created by Larry or Mariano.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was given to you.
My sentence was a diagram, I mean, none of those sentences.
You reviewed it, though. Okay. So, this second project is entitled Irvington Main Street and Station Road Pedestrian Improvements. Basically, my understanding is there's, this is really for crossing improvements at Main Street and Broadway and at Station Road and Broadway. Is that correct, Brenda?
Yeah. This is going to be pedestrian curb, yes. Curve, or on Main Street. Main Street.
No, that was the first one.
Oh, then it's Station Road.
The Station Road one, right. It's the Main Street Intersection Improvements, Pedestrian Improvements, and then the Station Road.
The Station Road Pedestrian Sidewalk. Station Road Sidewalk Improvements.
Oh, the Station Road Sidewalk Improvements. So that's actually, okay, that's good. That's, so that's stuff beyond the tunnel toward South Buckout then? Okay. Let me get a drink of water here. Resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds thereof. Whereas a project for the Irvington Main Street and Station Road Pedestrian Improvements, Village of Irvington, Westchester County, is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the cost of such program to be borne in the ratio of 77% federal funds and 23% non-federal funds, and whereas the Village of Irvington desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the cost of preliminary engineering and row incidentals, now therefore the Irvington Village Board duly convened does hereby resolve that the Irvington Village Board hereby approves the above-subject project, and it is further resolved that the Irvington Village Board hereby authorizes the Village of Irvington to pay in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share of cost of preliminary engineering and row incidentals worked for the project proportions thereof, and it is further resolved that the sum of $201,000 is hereby appropriated from general fund surplus and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project, and it is further resolved that in the event of the full federal and non-federal share cost exceeds the amount appropriated above, the Village, Irvington Village Board shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amounts immediately upon the notification by village administrator thereof, and it is further resolved that the village administrator of the Village of Irvington be, be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or applicable Marchiselli aid on behalf of the Village of Irvington with the New York State Department of Transportation in conjunction with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and/or, and the municipality's first instance funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs and all project costs within appropriations, appropriations thereof that are not so eligible. And it is further resolved that in addition to the village administrator, the following municipal titles, Commissioner of Public Works, Village Mayor, Village Engineer, Village Controller, Village Treasurer, are also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements or certifications on behalf of the municipal, municipality sponsor with New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project identified in the state-local agreement. Resolve that a certified copy of this resolution be filled, filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project, and it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. All right. I guess I will, what am I doing?
Move it.
Yes. I move to adopt this.
And I second.
And shall we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I don't know why I got stuck with the two infrastructure.
I think there was a reason it was on this tonight's agenda.
All right. Moving there on, this is, this is gonna make everyone happy for the upcoming Rocktoberfest. This is, I guess, for the music. Resolved to approve a contract with Gary Castelluccio.
Castelluccio.
Castelluccio and Associates for Musical Services related to Rocktoberfest. And they are known as, hang on, Damn the Torpedoes, I guess is their name. Resolved to approve a contract with Gary Castelluccio and Associates in the amount of $1,700 for musical services related to Rocktoberfest, and authorize the mayor to execute said contract subject to the resolution of the outstanding issues.
Really, I think the only outstanding issue was during that a rain day. This contract was a pretty simple contract.
Yeah, 120 minutes, including encore.
Two bottles for each person on a stage.
Free beer. Okay. Photos and videos are okay. Oh, that's nice. All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
I so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
And let's vote. All say aye, who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, for those who don't know, when is Rocktoberfest? It's October 4th, Saturday, October 14th. And the music appears to be, this, this particular music is 7:00 p.m.
But they're the headliners. It will be other music.
Well, you know the details.
A little bit. This is the only contract we...
Okay. Now, we are going to have approval of a retainer agreement with Meyer and Spencer P.C. We have an issue that we need to have some additional help in terms of looking at building department violations matters, and are looking to engage the firm of Meyer and Spencer, and one of the prime principals, Matt Spencer, was previously Irvington prosecutor, and he's familiar with the court, and he's familiar with a lot of the issues, and so the notion is to bring him, Ellen, to bring his firm in on a as-needed basis for dealing with building department violation matters that actually go to court. Is that a proper summary?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of retainer agreement with Meyer and Spencer P.C. Resolved to approve retainer agreement with Meyer and Spencer P.C. for legal services regarding building department matters and to authorize the village administrator to execute the contract. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're rapidly getting to the end. Okay. The next item is approval of agreement with Irvington Union Free School District for Pedestrian Safety Improvements in and along Heritage Road. So the long and short of it is that the village has been working with the state and to do improvements at the pedestrian crossing at Heritage Hill Road and Broadway, including, I think, better visibility sidewalk, crosswalks, additional sidewalk in the area where there isn't any, and so forth, but a lot of the work is on school easement, and so the village...
Well, it's not Heritage Hill Road, which is owned by the school, the school district, so that's why we, the village needs an easement to do the work there.
Yeah. And that's, and so this is for a temporary construction easement, which is part of the process in order to be able to move forward with, I'll give you this look, I guess it's basically the engineering's approval, right, already for it?
Yeah, the engineering's, okay, that was part of the contract, part of, part of the easement agreement. Exhibit A, it's not attached there, but...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we didn't get that, so. Oh, I see the easement. Oh, I see. Okay, so, approval of agreement with Irvington Union's Free School District for Pedestrian Safety Improvements in and along Heritage Hill Road, and I just have to say, Larry pointed out to me, these improvements are all village-funded. The school district is not, is not funding the improvements, so it's...
They're just letting us do it.
Right, exactly. Resolved to approve the temporary construction easement agreement with the Irvington Union Free School District for Pedestrian Safety Improvements in and along Heritage Road, and authorizing the village administrator to execute said agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have reached the end of our action items. Now we're going to do reports of board standing committees and officers, trustee liaison reports. I normally go first for, because I'm on that end. I just, I'll pick up a couple, but I just wanted to say, I hope everyone got a chance to either see the eclipse live or see it on TV. I got to see it on course on TV, but I also went up to Eastfield and had my glasses and watched it. It was quite exciting.
Or had at least 50, 60 people watching the park.
Great.
I watched it with those boxes. I did both.
Did you do it? I've done that in the past.
I haven't. Yeah, yeah, somebody in my office had one. It was fun.
I was getting social media from my daughters and stuff, like showing them.
I started the day with the box. I saw this young man, what is that? Explained it, and as I'm going back to the office, over by the hardware store, they're getting rid of boxes. I said, oh, here it is. So I went in, made my pit hole, and I went out. It was all okay. Then Ellen Litt, the captain of the ambulance corps, she comes out and says to Sarah, there's something like a box over there, over by Village Hall. Sarah goes, hey, that's burned it.
Did you do it with tin foil?
No, I did it originally with just a pin in the back of the box, and inside was white paper.
So what you do, then, make it really, in the future, what you do?
I did it in the back.
For the next total of...
You put a piece of tin foil and you poke the hole in that?
I took a soda can. Okay. Since the next eclipse isn't 2024. The punchline was Ellen Litt brought me solar glasses.
Oh, that's good.
Which I shared with everybody in Village Hall. Everyone had a nice opportunity to see it.
That's good, okay.
Thanks to Ellen for bringing that over for all of us.
So then, all right.
I'll keep it short. It's the end of the summer, and I just wanted to mention that we had another successful season at REC. We had a great season for Teenscape, a great season for Day Camp, and a great season for the O'Hara Summer League Basketball. And then looking forward, I just wanted to mention that on September 13th at 11:30 a.m., there will be a Sinek Hudson Park picnic to celebrate the 20-year anniversary.
Sorry?
September 13th at 11:30 a.m.
So we'll hear about it again. It'll, it'll blast it out.
I won't, I won't be here, so those who aren't...
What did they celebrate?
The starting of the project at Sinek Hudson.
20th anniversary.
Of the park.
The building of the park. So they invited anyone that had anything to do with it, from administration to construction, I believe, to engineering, to come and help celebrate.
Nice.
Nice.
That's it.
That's it. Do you want me to read Connie's two pieces?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, Highway Department, I guess, these are Connie's. Ah, yes. Highway Department Activities. Trimming around traffic signs throughout the village, cleaning, replacing, and adding traffic signs installed, replaced curbs on the east side of the Burnham Building Library. Cleaned up the west side of Aqueduct Parking Lot, re-struck the lines, replaced the guide rail, painted the new guide rail, replaced the screening at the south end with green giant arborvitae trees, replaced dirt paths for parking lot in Aqueduct to Croton Road with three new black top paths, handrails to be added. Assisted the parks department with the hauling of material, catch basin, cleaning catch basins with the vac all, line and crosswalk painting, as the vac all is being busy on Broadway.
Very busy.
Okay. And from Jane's English Bay, Water Department Activities, reading water meters. Summer Maintenance of Water Department Facilities, construction, constructed to siphon and draw down the water at Lower Halsey Park. Located and exercised water valves on Station Road for culvert project. Working on the cross-connection control program located in exercised water valves on South Broadway.
Fire Department. In June, emergency response in June, the Irvington Volunteer Firefighters responded to 38 calls for fire and rescue, and that's a total of 216 calls as of July 31st. Responded to Tarrytown twice and Doc's Ferry Mutual Aid for Structure Fires. Department Training on Tuesday, July 18th, 22 Irvington firefighters operated at the Bridge Street Waterfront. Topic of training was drafting water from the Hudson River and flowing large diameter hose and deliage guns. Water Rescue Training, July 11th, five firefighters operated Marine Four on Hudson River. Continued boat operations review and training for members. Maintenance, fire pumps on apparatus passed annual testing, and also, this is important, save the date, Saturday, October 7th, will be the department's annual inspection, which is always a wonderful event. All fire trucks will be out on this day.
That is fine. Okay. Well, we don't have the administrators' report, I don't think, unless it's been virtualized, so do we have a clerk treasurer's report?
Help us announce that we're being ready for our annual audit that will take, starting on September 5th. The Orange will be here for about a week. I can give a further report once I, you know, finish a few more things, but the village had an excellent year last year.
Great.
And I can give more details in the future.
Okay. So now we have the village attorney's report?
I have a report. We just say you did a great job sharing. Yeah. Our...
It's not technical, Paul.
It's not easy. It's not easy.
So, we have a public comment session as...
Thank you for inviting me. I came down primarily for the parking and the...
Did you get your say?
Uh, do you want to say anything further? The APN does not work for, I don't think, for any aspect.
Could you come up and just say that, or do you not want to be on tape saying that?
I prefer that to be on tape.
Okay. Well, we'll make a note of that.
Yeah, I think it, no matter which viewpoint, I don't think it works. I think it works against businesses, the restaurants, the dinner, the city.
What, do you have a time that you think might be better?
Five, not six. Five would work better. But six, we can live with, but eight would be detrimental.
All right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does that have your name? I learned a lot.
Okay, well, can we put your name on record?
Ellen Silverstein. Thank you. You're welcome.
So now we're gonna go to review of action items. I think the only thing that I could see was maybe get the feedback to Larry on the parking feedback.
Oh, yeah. And Brenda was, Brenda was having detailed notes of the speakers as well.
Okay, great. Any other action items? Oh, Brenda, get the...
Revised.
Make sure that Karen, yeah. No, she put...
I took care of that.
Oh, you did? Thank you.
I sent her any announcements. Yes, she had, gave her a reminder.
So it will be up tomorrow?
I'm sure she will.
The revised, uh...